Bring the court project. Search that declaration, please.
Are you signing that now?
It was before then. That's the next step is to try to. They rejected.
They did?
They rejected.
They did?
Rick would be happy about that. Always an adventure.
Well, if you're gonna wear yours, I'm gonna wear mine.
All right, you're first. Oh, my God.
Yeah, just have him hand it back to you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's now ten o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Those of you that have cell phones, please put them on silence. Can we all stand and do the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you very much. We'll move on. We have the minutes of the October seventh meeting. Are there any additions or questions to those minutes as nailed out?
Move up.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We also have the minutes of the Orton Slough District. Are there any corrections or those minutes?
Move up.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the discussion of approval of the claims.
Move it.
Your second? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And I'll pass the. That's Human Resources. Human Resources, we have the approval of memorandum, personal transactions. I'll pass it around for signatures.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the item of approval of reauthorization of the initiation of hiring process. Fair motion.
I would. I did a little checking on this. Case loads run twenty-five to fifty around the state. The ID waiver assessment has been contracted out by the state, which reduces paperwork for the targeted case managers. The IME or Medicaid put out a letter last week that said they're considering including the mentally challenged in the targeted waiver, or the target, whatever that is Rickner has. The integrated home health model. And there seems to be a movement statewide to move the intellectually challenged into that[269.61][270.04]integrated home health model. One county is not hiring even if the positions are vacated because they don't understand what's happening. The fact that we're reimbursed by Medicaid is irrelevant. Money's got to come from somewhere. It's not free. So I think adding a case manager at this time would be inappropriate. Consideration for additional people should be done during the budget time and not during the regular year. It was not. We would not let anyone else do this unless it was an absolute emergency like the nurses.
Patty, you want to respond to that, please?
Our case loads average about thirty because of the amount of paperwork. We got started with the first county that started the CIST evaluation. We opened that, our office is up, we allow those folks to come up. I don't see where it's reduction in paperwork at all. The case load and paperwork at thirty seems to fit with what our individuals do. And the regulations that we are under requires that we do not keep anybody on a waiting list for targeted case management, which is the only model we have in place right now, whatever this stage is considering. We are under the targeted case management rules and regulations which require us to not maintain or keep anybody on a waiting list for three months, three month period. Teresa said she's got about twenty-five referrals right now to go on. We have Sarah's case load that was submitted for resignation. Those will be redistributed amongst the girls. We have the additional referrals coming on that we have to address. And then that person will not be given, the new person would not be given thirty case loads, new case loads that all have to be started at the same time because that paperwork would be totally above the level. We have never, we have never hired anybody without the need to do so. And that sometimes comes at budget times, but more often than not, not. We bring in case managers as we need them and we don't take people below, you know, I remember a time when we've been below twenty-five cases. So the girls are all at right now thirty plus.
I know a whole lot about case loads. And when you set a caseload number, it's the maximum and the minimum. And thereafter, everybody wants less.
No, our girls have not, our case managers have not been given the luxury. We keep them right at thirty, thirty plus. Because like I say, the amount of paperwork that goes for targeted case management and Medicaid program is considerable. The CIST has done nothing to reduce that paperwork. They do come in and give the evaluation, but it's up to the case manager to write those goals and objectives and continue the meetings with the individuals on a regular basis.
But it could all go to the integrated home health model.
It could all go there, but until that decision is made, we're still under the requirements of the federal regulations to not have a waiting list for more than thirty day, for three months for an individual.
So you're saying you would set it at thirty and create a waiting list?
Pardon me?
So you're going to set a magic number and create a waiting list? Is that what you're?
No, we're not. We want to delete the waiting list that we have now because we don't have the case managers to serve. We don't, we don't run to the board when we have, you know, we think we might get.
This is not justification for a position.
Why is it not?
There's nothing in there. It is your opinion that you need another case manager. There's no justification in there.
Well, that, that opinion is based upon.
Then get the opinion on paper.
The history of the office.
Patty, how many clients with the new case manager, one is hired, would that person be responsible for? Do you suppose they'll start, you would recommend that they start with?
Well, we're gonna end, we'll redistribute the existing, okay? So that they don't have the expectation to have thirty.
I understand that being an improvement.
Okay? That new person is going to have, what, twenty-five?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Oh, well, that's still quite a few.
Yes, and then everybody else will have twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then they will all take turns taking new people.
Who takes them? Okay? What's the pleasure of the board on this initiation of hiring?
I move that, I don't have a problem with this.
Is there a second?
I'm second. I don't either.
Well, I don't have an issue with it either. I think that, you know, we can't have a waiting list. And if we, we've got to comply with federal regulations. And I think that, you know, just based on services provided and the create, the quality that we've enjoyed over the last number of years, particularly in the mental health area, it should be done.
If there is a change on like moving people over, as I understand, to what, integrated?
I didn't change, yeah.
Okay, then we would revisit the case manager position? Would that would, I'm just trying to.
The, the second half of that is, they may go to IHH and the name of targeted case management may change, but it's going to change to care manager or something. So that service is still always be required, whether they're under IHH or targeted case management. It is still going to be a requirement that the people are served to make sure that those assessments are carried out by the providers and other folks that are responsible under care.
Okay. Any further discussion? In, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number C, which is the county self-funding health insurance plan. Everyone's got to discuss that, please, please.
Sad to all, but just another need to let you know that the SPD is finally complete. There were some discrepancies that we had between the original SPD that was submitted to Wellmark and what our expectations for claims payment were versus what the, how the claims were actually paid. There were three fairly significant areas that we had to readdress and it's taken us most of the year, you know, that's finally readdressed. They are complete at this point. Claims have been reprocessed, so everything should be fixed and on its way and the SPD is fine now.
Good.
We'll be distributing those hopefully at the health, I'll be in the room to tell you.
Can you tell people what SPD means?
I'm sorry. Too much time to build. Summary plan description that just describes the complete making social health plan. Let you know what it pays for with them.
Okay, sounds good. I like that.
Thanks, Ed. Item D is, Ed, we've already taken care of that, haven't we? Pending litigation, discussion, and action. You did that earlier on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have approval of and presentation of a proclamation on Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Margaret, are you here? Do you have?
I'm here.
Good. Do you have anyone else you want to have step up here with you?
I'm here by myself too.
Oh, you are?
It's good to see you back in action.
Sheriff can come up and stand with us.
Well, I wanted to say something.
It's good to see you back in action.
Thank you.
Okay. Margaret, I'd like to, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all ages, race, ages, income levels, lifestyles, and sex, and that the fact that the problem affects someone that you know. Whereas one of three women will be a victim of violence in her lifetime. Domestic violence violates the individual human rights and destroys dignity, security, and self-worth due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. And whereas the SULAN, in SULAN, the Council of Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence is available twenty-four hours a day and last responds to, at last is, responds to one thousand seven hundred and eighty un-duplicated victims, provided eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-five nights of shelter to three hundred and eighty women and three hundred and one children fleeing domestic abuse. And despite high census, no one in an unsafe situation was turned away. Whereas the impact of domestic violence affects all members of the community and only a coordinated community response will put a stop to this atrocious crime and assures funding for continuity available to provide self-life services. Now therefore, I, George W. Boykin, Chairman, on behalf of Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Woodbury County, Iowa, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled events and programs and to think about the fact that this may be someone that you know. Thank you. You provide a valuable service to this community, Martha, and you have for years. I know that we've used it quite extensively over the years. I have my agency and other agencies have too. You're vital importance to this community. What you also do is provide with the number of people that you support here and provide the services to. You keep people out of our law enforcement system. You hold families together. You keep youngsters in the family that, that needs to be kept there. And you're vital importance to this, to this community and we do appreciate this.
Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, our agency doesn't exist by ourselves. We need the community and our partners in the community to help us respond to domestic violence. Without the Sheriff's Department, law enforcement, the county attorney's office, others in the community, we couldn't do our work without their cooperation and assistance. We have very good response from the community. In October, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to really create awareness in our community. And usually we have a vigil because we want the community to know that frequently, about every six weeks in Iowa, a woman dies as a result of domestic violence. However, this year, we're not going to have a vigil. We're going to have a documentary that is supported by the Wade Foundation next Monday evening at the Orpheum. There's going to be a documentary that talks about domestic violence, women leaving. And, you know, you often hear, well, why doesn't she just leave? It's very difficult to leave and the documentary will really show some of those issues that women face around leaving. We want to change that question in terms of not blaming the victim, but looking at why does that abuser continue to abuse her and someone else if she does leave that situation? Our society needs to take a look at both the victim as well as the abuser and put more energy into services related to that abuser. So I urge you to come to that documentary. We will have a panel presentation of our partners after the documentary, but it's very, very well done. And I'd like to see our whole, many leaders in the community as well as community members there to see this thoughtful presentation. Lastly, we cannot provide the services we provide at our agency without the financial support of the community as well. And I am pleased to announce that we're having an open house at the end of October. And I'm just going to pass this out, but we would really like the board supervisors to come as well so that you can see the agency that provides the services that it does in our community. Many people have not been there. Often in the past, we have not wanted the public in the facility and because of that, there's been many misunderstandings about what the facility is and what it looks like, the services we provide. So because of renovation of the kitchen, much because of the generosity of word to us, it's finished. We'd like you to come and see that facility. We have other work to do, but we're very happy with how that renovation turned out.
Wonderful, Martha. Sheriff, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I've been talking to Margaret and I wanted to let you all know Margaret and I are, I'm trying to work to deal out with the courts. I'm going to work with local legislators.
Agreed.
Look for the board to help us. But we have a, when we put people on a protection order, it's a piece of paper. And it's, it's just a piece of paper. You have to tell us all these things, but yes, I mean, it meaningless, but yet it has that. But it really doesn't have what I think is necessary. And we've come up with a scram bracelet electronic tracking device. And I want the courts to put those people on electronic monitoring and give that victim the receiver to know that subject's within a thousand feet. We have that technology today and this piece of paper is nothing more than, it's time to people. With that party having that receiver to know they're within a thousand feet, it will notify law enforcement and we can respond on the spot and do an occasional check. So that's the partnership that we want to work together. And I'm asking local legislators to get involved in this, to change that law so the courts will put these people on this. Because that piece of paper, we want to serve that protection order is merely a paper. You ask many other victims and I'm going to see if I can get some to come and argue in front of the legislators and try to get some laws changed.
I think that's major, Sheriff, I mean, because as you say, the people that are perpetrators, I mean, they really, they don't have any respect for the person that they're abusing or a law for that matter at all. So if we can get something like that, I'm sure that the board would be willing to help you and to somehow provide supportive information to our state legislature to get that law changed so that that can happen.
And we're going to bring that up.
That would really add some teeth to this.
Yeah, we're going to bring that up Monday at our meeting.
Absolutely.
All right.
Have you one? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hope to see you Monday and have the open house.
You betcha. Could I have a motion, Ed, to receive this resolution for signatures, please?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Running a little bit behind, we should have, we have a public hearing for a property sale and it's one-two-eight-nine-seven-zero located at fourteen oh eight West Fourth Street. Is there anyone in the audience to speak for or against the sale of this property? We're just asking the public hearing now, ma'am. Then I'll offer for sale right after we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, hearing not, will the hearing be closed?
Okay. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now I'm opening it up for bids. Is there anyone in the audience to bid on this piece of property? Yes, ma'am, would you give your name, please?
Margaret J., S.A.J.Y. I live next door to that property. I have been maintaining that property ever since they tore the house down. I have had weak growth rate on it because of all the weeds that grow. We mow it every once a week or so. We do the sidewalk every snowing, but we have been taking care of it as a family. We've been taking care of it ever since the house was torn down. I mean, it's been about three or four years.
And your bid is what?
Barbie.
Your bid is what? What is your bid? The amount of your bid?
Oh, a hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, all right.
There was another one, too.
Is anyone else bid on it?
I was bid on it. Danny Robinson.
Danny Robinson? What's your bid?
Five hundred.
Is anyone else bid on it? Anyone else bid on it? Hearing none? I've entertained a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
Does she understand what happened?
I sure do, Margaret.
Okay.
Motion to sell the property to Danny Robinson for five hundred.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item, item C is the resolution of property sale for property zero-seven-four-zero-four-zero. We need a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
Move twice it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth day of October at ten fifteen.
Margaret?
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item seven, county engineer. I think we'll move right on to, we have the opening of bids. We're kind of running behind time, so we'll go right on to that.
We're actually others, sir. These bids are for the extension of two hundred forty eighth street from Allison to Andrew Avenue and then the improvement of Andrew on two hundred thirty-fifth street. We have three bidders.
Do you have a bid sheet?
Yes, you do.
Yes.
Our first bid is from Lieber Construction Incorporated of Watten Island. A bid bond is provided. The, I'll read the total bids.
Okay.
We'll be checking those then afterwards. Total bid, seven hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars, fourteen cents. Seven-seven-four, one-two-two, fourteen. Our next bid is from CJ Boynton and Sons. Proposal guarantee was also included. Total bid, eight hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy cents. Eight-six-two, three-six-five, seventy. Finally, we have a bid from LA Carlson of Merrill, Iowa. Proper bond was included. Total bid, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Seven-nine-seven, six fifty-eight, seventy.
Is this a finished product?
The, the project involves grading the road, putting improvement of ditches. We're putting eight inches of macadam base, which is a fair coarse stone, as a base layer, five inches of gravel on top of that. This will provide us a good wearing surface that will treat with calcium chloride for winter season. Next spring, we'll be looking at doing something more permanent for servicing autographs coming into the seal code.
Okay, but this, when they're done, the road is open?
This is, road will be open. This will be a haul road that'll serve CF through the winter.
Mr. Chairman, I move these bids here first to county engineer.
Second.
And you'd like to come back with a decision on it within the next hour?
We will take bids out immediately and Ben has the computer. We'll plug in their bids, make sure everything is correct on the bids. And we'd like to make recommendation of work today.
That would be good.
We put this on a very tight timetable so that we have a late start date on this project of October twenty-seventh, so.
It's going to get pretty bad.
Everything moving right along.
Okay, very good.
The bids were excellent, man.
Yes, bids were very good. We got better prices today than we got for the CF drive.
So now when you, when you, it started, you want the twenty-seventh, when will it be completed? What's the timeline on that? Do you know?
Well, end of November.
Depending on the weather?
Roughly end of November.
Okay, all right, sounds pretty good.
There is not a huge amount of earth to move on this. Everything's on site, so they're not hauling it in from other locations. Everything we have and need is, is right there on site. We're not too far from LG Everest, so this should go fairly quickly.
Okay. Those in favor, the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, let's go back to item A.
Item A, we took quotations on hydraulic excavator. I think that was about four weeks ago. We've analyzed the bids. We had the opportunity finally to take a look at a demonstration unit provided by another county up in Wisconsin last week. I recommend award of bid to Sheehan Mac Ballbo of Sioux Falls. The whole bid machine was two hundred thirty-three thousand. I'll cheat right now, about one hundred dollars, I believe it was. There's also a couple of other items. We have not made a decision on some of the accessories to purchase yet. We are looking at buying a ditch cleaning bucket. Price on the ditch cleaning bucket from Sheehan was thirty-eight hundred thirty-five. Price on the ditch cleaning bucket from Sheehan was thirty-eight hundred thirty-five dollars. The hydraulic tree shear is a needed piece of equipment, but now that we've made the selection on the excavator, we will take our current tree shear to them to see if it can be modified and operate on the current shear.
Okay.
Twenty-three thousand, or two hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred seventy dollars is the final bid with trade.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay.
Next, we have a request for board approval of an easement across our property at seven fifty-nine Frontage Road in Mobile. Mid-American has been contacted by Fair Board to provide additional electric service for the new campground that's been constructed that lays just on the north quarter of our property. Best way for them to bring power in is across the east end of the secondary road property. We've looked at this with Mid-American staff. I recommend approval of the easement.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item C?
Item C is consider award of the Omix Asphalt Brown and Seal. We recommend award to the low bidder, Sue Commercial Sleeping of West One for seventeen thousand, one hundred five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
We also took bids with, for recycling of our concrete stockpiles at Mobile and Odo. We had two bids that were very close, that were both very similar on a per ton basis for the recycle. The bid from CAP did have an error. Their unit price times the bid quantity governs. They had put in a bid for twice mobilization. Their mobilization was bid at eighteen hundred dollars. They put it in for thirty-six hundred dollars, resulting in an eighteen hundred dollar error on their bid. With that correction, I recommend award to CAP Recycling of Sioux City for a hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder? Got your annual report?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, we all had, got to that and chance to review that. Hopefully not put you to sleep.
That's a good report. You always give an excellent report.
Our highlights of the year, of course, were construction of the two bolt ramps on the little Sioux River. Of course, following heavy rains in June, we had some other issues that we had to deal with with damages from that and did some repairs to the one ramps. Have a little bit better shape and as well as does that regroading, recreating of the Southwood Conservation entrance road. We had some erosion problems from the rains there when that project was done last fall. So that's all been repaired and fixed and campers down there really like that. Better grade coming out of there than that ski pass curve.
Bet.
Not a lot of huge projects. You know, it's past summer. We went through some other projects that'll be on next year's report since the fiscal year and it cuts right in the middle of our busy season. And most of last year was spent as well as through the summer getting ready for hosting our state conference, which we did last month. Have any questions on the report or?
Again, very good. I mean, you always have an excellent report to us and your state conference, I think, you know, went off very, very, very successful. I was there and met, you know, some very nice folks. I think that they enjoyed themselves while they were here in Sioux City, folks from outside the county and I think they appreciate, you know, our hearts and what we've done in this area. So, very nice, very well done.
It's always a good conference. It rotates around the state, so you can see different areas. Been thirteen years since we were up here. Last time was two days after nine eleven occurred and it was a real tough time plus a rain, twenty-eight days. We had everyone who was here.
Yes, we did.
Exact opposite of the great time. People from out of counties that probably escaped were here.
Yep, they did a lot of enjoyable things. Took them on a nice tour. Is there a motion to receive this report? Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
The report will be on our website as well. You'll be able to access.
Excellent. Thank you, Ray. Item nine, Emergency Services, Gary Brown.
Good morning. Got a bill for a medium duty truck and a four bits. My recommendation is that we open them today, refer them back to me for a week, and then make the order next week.
Okay.
Hey, do you have your shot on? The first one is, very long. Forty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars. Eighty-four, eight, ninety-four.
Say that again.
Forty-eight thousand.
Okay. Second time you said eighty-four.
Eight hundred ninety-four dollars. Sorry.
This is for a medium duty truck. How big is that truck?
It's equivalent of a heavy duty.
Three fifty, something like that?
Yeah, three fifty, four fifty, depending on which vendor you talk to, whether it's Chevy or Dodge. The second bid is from Billy. Their bid is forty-one, seven, three, seven. Forty-one thousand, seven, thirty-seven. Third one is Sioux City Ford. Sioux City Ford is forty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. Four, seven, one, thirty-eight. Ford, last conference show. Here's, theirs is four thousand, or forty-two thousand, nine, nine, nine. Forty-two thousand, nine, nine, nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move the bids here first to Emergency Management for recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Is that all you need, Gary?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, we have Mark Neeris Bank again on consideration of project award.
We're not quite there yet with the recommendations.
Quite there yet, okay, we'll just, we'll just hold off.
Correction. Do you want to update on construction?
Yes, please.
Sure. Our CF drive project is now complete with the exception of seeding. This is the permanent road coming off of two hundred fifty-fifth Street that will serve the completed plant. The road is built, all structures are in place, water line's in place, and it's been dropped. It needs to be linked up to the internal roads within the plant, but the county portion of that road is finished and ready to go when, when it's ready on the other side. Our bridge construction on Michigan Avenue, the bridge itself is complete. The bridge contractor will be moving in and getting the road built up to the elevation of that new bridge. Work's starting next week on two hundred eighty-fifth Street. This is one of the first two bridges that we bought back in June. That's, involves the one point three million dollar special project levy that we started. We're in our second year of that now. The other project, Pocahontas Avenue, is well underway with grading. As you probably heard last week, we had an unfortunate fatality on site there. It involved an employee of one of the subcontractors of this construction. The work on Bronson continues. By the end of this week, all of the substructure work should be done. They should be updating all work for the support of the concrete slab bridge during next week if all goes well. We've been slowed a little bit by rain on a lot of these construction projects. See if that's back. Everything was good.
If you need more time on that, we're gonna be around for quite a while.
Actually, we don't. We should have a clean award or ability to make a clean award here. Got one for Pat as well. We had a twenty-two thousand dollar gap, which is quite an error. Make that not work. I recommend award of the project to Lieber Construction for seven hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents.
Okay.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
We will prepare contract documents and put that wrong.
Very good.
Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, yes, sir.
We should talk about funding that.
Yes.
In the funding, I'd recommend that we do essential purpose bonds. I'm going to quote bio. We do have the ability to do it. The reason why we use essential purpose bonds is we need to kind of save back our low cost sales taxes. Our investment Woodbury County is starting to take off. We have a couple of big projects potentially coming up, so we prefer to use essential purpose bonds.
Okay.
If you agree with that, we can go ahead and start the procedure, get this done immediately.
Is there a motion to allow him to go ahead and do this? Essential purpose bond?
We're okay doing that, Josh?
It's not on the agenda today.
We'll have to push it back.
I mean, what kind of background work do you need to do?
Background work is just getting all our bonding trays set, hearing date. We go ahead and have the hearings, have a resolution set the hearing date and then we have it about three, four weeks.
You can proceed with that with the consensus of the board and then come back next week to set the date.
Alright. Do we have a consensus, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, hearing of any individual which to make a presentation on and item not on the agenda? Chair?
We'll get a bill next week. We'll get sticker shock. It's, we implemented a, well, the doctor implemented a ruling that somebody comes into jail, it's point two five or higher. They need to go to the hospital and either sign off on a medical or go through the procedures and then they can be booked into our jail. Well, when we did that, the police department is the ones who brought in the majority of those people and they were getting the bill. And so they brought it to our attention that they probably got about an eighteen thousand dollar bill. Well, the August Supreme Court ruled in nineteen ninety-four that it's sheriff's responsibility regardless if they're booked in. Once they get into custody, it becomes the sheriff's fees to pay them, which is hopefully something that changes in legislation this year because it becomes very expensive for the county. So there'll probably be about a twenty thousand dollar bill. But I emailed Josh and PJ to review that to see if they see anything different. But checking with other sheriffs throughout Iowa, that has been, always been the deal since then.
Right.
The ruling, and the ruling came Woodbury County. It was Miller versus Sioux City Police. So it was when Sheriff Miller was in, so it's there and it's, not much we can do about it. Unless Josh hides something in our ear for us. That's it. So don't get sticker shock.
Uh, well, we got you here. We got a deal from Stollman.
Right.
Changing the numbers.
Right.
I'm having a lot of difficulty figuring those out.
Okay.
And this is really simple for me. If it can stay this way, I appreciate it.
Well, okay. The, and what we could do is we can still give you that weekly if that makes it easier for you. But I, I want you to get the monthly one because it's a clear picture of what happens in our jail. If you look at the one we give you monthly, you're gonna see the numbers at times are two seventy-eight. That is a real picture of what our correctional officers are doing each and every day. Where you get that one, you're just getting a snapshot at the end of the day. And the clearer picture is at times on, say, today is the fourteenth, maybe we handle two hundred and thirty inmates. On the fifteenth, maybe we handle two sixty-four. That's a really a clear picture of what is happening. And the form that we sent you that we were going to change so you got a clearer picture was the one that we send the Department of Corrections. That's what they get. But what we can do since you're kind of used to that is we can give you that. Don't get fixated on that because it's really not a clear picture. The monthly tally is really going to show you what our correctional staff deals with daily. It's a really a better, and then maybe I could explain it to you better.
It, it was just more information we actually need, you know, if it's men, women, Sioux City.
Kind of gives you a really good idea of what's happening. So better, better really picture of what's happening in the jail.
All that is telling you at six o'clock in the morning how many inmates are in there. At six oh five, that number isn't even accurate anymore. I mean, it changes that fast. So I, when I was looking at it, the Department of Corrections report is the accurate report that we do every month. And on that, all, all we're sending you is six o'clock in the morning when we do a tally. How many inmates? Actually, it's five forty in the morning because they do it twenty minutes before they come off ship and by the time six o'clock hits, that number is changed.
Because you're processing more people than what shows up on this one sheet.
Right. All that is, is six o'clock when we do our head count at six o'clock, which that's the number that they've been sending you. But we could have three people waiting to be booked in and they're not gonna be on that count because that count's already been done. So you're just getting a snapshot of that time.
Would they be on the next day?
That never served. I mean, they don't serve, I mean, they're in and out.
Right. They could be booked, processed, go to court. They could be released and they will never show up as part, as a number that our correctional officers handled because you don't get the next one until five forty.
Maybe that number could be added to this sheet here so it's more simply understood.
Um.
For, for us.
Well, I can make it simpler. I just gave you, all I did was take the report that we sent to DOC and make a look at that. But if you want a simpler number, I can do that.
I mean, I went through that. I'm saying to myself, it's a lot more information than I need.
And what we could do, Larry, is I would say Monday, we could give you the numbers that we had all day instead of saying that's two twelve that day. That day we may have had in and out two hundred and forty. That way you actually have a better number of what we're dealing with. I think that's, so yeah, I think maybe. I'd like to defer that to them. Anything else?
That's it. Thanks, thank you, Chair. Anyone else? Okay, I entertain a motion to recess. Okay.
Motion.
And we will recess to the Nature Center at one o'clock.
There's that one there.
Let me ask you a question. We don't, if we bring someone about like everything to work out, how do I hold on to the first public procedures for?
We're the only one that likes to talk to their permanent people, Karen. And that would be next question?
What's that?
Well, I, by state law, we have response, response. So if they just go in for a night and hours, giving us a county, we have criteria that they ask all bidders to meet before they're eligible. They're in on our project, so. And it could be any, I mean, entire, please, let all that be. And I do have some legislation, state law, and I was like, there's somebody I'm surprised at. And then just one more thing. I want to let you know, I was out this morning to CF and we did a little literature drop up there. I have twelve individuals that we set up and did a little informational drop up there for a lot of people. We did about seven hundred and fifty flyers, about seven hundred and fifty cars go through there. You know what? We've got less than ten percent of Iowa plates going into that place. And I just want to let you know, we haven't really been offered any opportunities to get in there. And I just want to let you know, we haven't really been offered any opportunities to get in there. I feel, I feel a little, I guess, a little bummed out that the board hasn't put any safeguards for all the dollars that this county's put into there. Looking at, we have some to say for local hiring. Also, you know, we've got a lot of kids coming out of schools, it's not that we have opportunities, and we're not offering that. There's just a lot of opportunities. Without money, we should start safeguarding our taxpayers a little better. I think we all have tried and went after this thing. And I think, you know, after we, after we did it, we still could throw in a few more extra dollars, I mean, it's already built in.
Right, well, and that should happen.
Especially with the kind as everything is, and tell the law for what it's worth. You know, I think, if we already own it, why do we have to keep giving it?
Uh, CF, that's all we look at, we give that right on.
Well, we, I know what, I'll just say for example, you know. The rule that's centered up in the law, in Sioux Falls, they did put some criteria on that, you know. For some of these companies.